Good evening. This agenda was prepared in advance of tonight's meeting. The final agenda for tonight's meeting is subject to change at the time of the meeting. Any changes will be noted at the time they are made and again after the meeting on the public board minutes which are available on the district's website. Denise?
Esta agenda fue preparada antes de la reunión de esta noche. La agenda final para la reunión de esta noche está sujeta a cambios en el momento de la reunión. Cualquier cambio se anotará en el momento en que se realice y nuevamente después de la reunión en las actas de la junta pública que están disponibles en el sitio web del distrito.
Thank you very much. Let's call this meeting to order. We will have the Pledge of Allegiance being read by Mr. Curtis Rett. And can everybody please remain standing for a moment of silence?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you Mitch. Another very, very difficult moment of silence this evening. Moment of silence for TC Reed, senior at Middletown High School. Sadly, very sadly passed away in an automobile accident. Has left a whole educational community in the city in shock. You really can't convey what our education community is feeling at this time. He was a beloved member of the school community. Warm smile, kindness and joy brought to all who knew him. Our hearts are with the family, friends, all those who had the privilege of knowing him during this tough time. I purposely did not wear a suit jacket this evening. People will ask me why because this tie, I don't know if you can get it, save all our children. And this is really what we try to do. We try to save our children. We try to provide guidance to our children. We try to give our children help. And hopefully we succeed in the majority of cases. So please remember TC and your thoughts and prayers. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Mr. Perrino. Right now we'll read the mission of the enlarged city school district being read by Pastor John Williams.
Mission of the enlarged city school district of Middletown. We strive to provide fiscally sound educational opportunities in a safe environment that continuously supports our diverse student population. We will enable all students to graduate, to reach their full potential, to become lifelong learners and to be competitive, productive members of society.
Thank you. Ms. Moncharie, roll call.
Mr. Estrada, Mr. Moore, Mr. Perrino, Mr. Rett, Ms. Romero, Mr. Tobiasin, Mr. Freddie Williams, Pastor Williams, Mr. Mitchell Williams.
Here. Thank you very much. So on to the agenda. May I have a motion to approve the agenda as presented?
So moved.
Second on that.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion has passed. 6A may have a motion to approve the regular meeting minutes of October 24th, 2024 as presented.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any discussion? Any opposed? Motion pass. We have no administrative? Administrative personnel memorandum. May I have a motion to approve the administrative personnel memorandum 10A, numbers one through 12, as presented?
So move on that.
Second.
No, that's okay. Instructional. Okay. Personnel memorandum, instructional. Got it, got it. No, that's okay. Any discussion? Any opposed? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion has passed. 7B, instructional personnel memorandum.
So moved.
Just take one pause for one second.
Oh, okay.
Non-instructional.
Yeah.
He can skip this one because he just did, he just did 10 on the instructional. He's about to do 10C.
Yeah, he just did 10B.
Non-instructional personnel memorandum.
Non-instructional personnel memorandum. C, may I have a motion to approve the non-instructional personnel memorandum 10C, numbers one through 12, as presented?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Financial memorandum. D, may I have a motion to approve financial memorandum 10D, numbers one through nine, as presented?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion pass. Oh, you got it backwards. Yeah. Fox, thanks, brother. We all right. Special services memorandum. May I have a motion to approve special services memorandum 10E, number one, two, as presented?
Second on that.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Change orders. May I have a motion to approve change orders 7F, numbers one through 10, as presented?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion?
Mr. Bill?
Yes, Bill?
Yep.
Yes, sir. So we have 10 change orders tonight. Six of them are credit change orders and four are ads. The first four that are ads cover such things as modifying and rerouting ductwork to accommodate window installations. The next is for installation of carpet and tile and cove base. Another is for abatement of VCT at Twin Towers. Third one is to provide data and power for the cameras. And the last one that's an ad, oh, sorry, that one's a credit. Let me, so that's, that's all the ads. There's some, the credits, there's a credit for deleting the Trazo flooring from one scope, from the tile contractor's scope since it's already in the flooring contractor's scope. There's another credit for providing a $5 million limit for the umbrella insurance. The next is for a credit for providing porcelain tile in lieu of the specified tile. Then we have two credits for unused flooring allowances from the presidential and Mont Hagan projects this summer. And the last one is for the deleting of the replacement boiler room door since it wasn't
Any further discussion?
Thanks, Mitch.
Yes, Mr. Perrino?
Mr. President, thank you. Bill, I know Bill and I go over the change orders during the week and if there's anything that looks amiss, I bring it to the attention of the facilities committee. Bill, there were a number of very significant credits. Do you remember exactly, not exactly, but approximately how much those credits total to?
It was approximately $510,000 worth of credits.
$510,000, good. And you know, Bill Bartlett and the rest of the buildings and grounds and staff and custodian staff, they watch the pennies very, very carefully here and they try to get the best possible deals with the various contractors when they bid. So congratulations. The other thing for anyone who has not attended our meetings, we have all this information a week and more beforehand, so we're not rubber stamping things. We can ask any questions we want. So I just thought I'd mention that as I sometimes do, Mitch. Thank you.
I want to emphasize something if I could do. I want to emphasize the amount of the credits again. You know, Mr. Bartlett said it was, it was $500,000. Let me emphasize it in a way that will really help to amplify the impact as a half a million dollars.
Right, half a million dollars.
So consider, consider that, those are credits that's coming back, half a million dollars. That's, that's significant, so.
Mitch, just a question on the canopy project. Was that for a PP, the new canopy where you put the cameras in?
The preparation for it last summer. We ran the conduit and stuff underground in preparation for the installation of the canopy.
Thank you.
Yes.
Thank you very much. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion pass. Action items. May I have a motion to approve my brother's keeper fellow grant scholar fellows as presented?
So moved.
Amir Armstrong and Yacine Cortez. I move in second. Thank you very much. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Top of board members' recognition and community updates.
Want to go around?
Any update? So we'll go with them. So we'll go. Ms. Romero, we'll start on this end.
Regarding Twin Towers mourning, intramurals have been a success. Scholars have been collaborating and building up, is that it? Scholars have been collaborating and building upon teamwork while playing basketball, soccer and other sports, including educators playing side by side with them. And all scholars are invited to partake in the fun every day from 6:30 to 7:15. During the weeks leading to the presidential election, the middle school scholars participated in activities exploring the different aspects of the elections and the impact on themselves as they took a deep dive into the local politics, including Middletown leaders and how they support job creation and small businesses in our city. They took action, so from this, they took actions themselves by voting School Wide Spirit Day, which will be held coming up. That's what I have. Thank you.
Thank you, Pastor Williams. Mr. Moore?
I just want to take, show a quick appreciation to the Mont Hagan Student Council. They held the election this past Monday. It was pretty successful. Although my daughter threw a hat in there, she didn't, she wasn't successfully elected, but she definitely looked forward to an opportunity to continue to serve any capacity moving forward. Told her not to give up and she definitely told me, like I did, not to give up and keep going. So that was pretty cool. They also held their first dance this past Friday. There was also another success as well. Outside of that, that's all I have for today.
Thank you, Mr. Moore, Mr. Perrino.
Thank you, President Williams. You know, in our mission statement, I'm going to get to that one in just a second. In our mission statement, we have maintain a safe and secure environment. And we might also say maintaining a inviting environment. If you look around our fields, the fields are in tremendous condition. If you look at our buildings, in the fall, we have fall displays of floral flowers, mums and so on. In the spring, there's other displays. I've heard comments when I've been to the football games of how good the fields look, how manicured they are. And this evening, it's a, of course, a joint responsibility, but this evening we have our head groundsman here, Mr. Flanagan. Can you stand up, Randy? Randy Flanagan. And he really does an outstanding job. There's some of his work right there. It just makes a nice atmosphere when you walk into our buildings. And Randy, is there anything you'd like to say at this time?
Good evening. I just want to say, me and my guys take great pride in what we do. And if it wasn't for them, you know, a lot of this wouldn't be possible. So I just want to give them a shout out. Skip Andrews, Mark Martel, Andrew Norton, Sam Citronini and Ignacio Rodriguez Zares. Yeah, that's it.
Yeah, nice job. Yeah.
Quick question back there. I was wondering maybe if I might can require your services maybe?
Yeah, right. Not only you.
Now, the, let's see, I still think I have a little time here. One of our board members tried to keep it a secret, but I found out. He is being honored by the Junior League of Orange County for his service to the community. His service as a rising star. And he is going to be honored at the Villa Venezia on November 14th from 5:30, 8:30. And the person is none other than Mr. Curtis Rett. Very, very educated. And it is quite an honor and he is, he is going to accept that honor.
Yes.
And if anyone likes, I have reservation information. So he has, he's one of the many illuminaries or few illuminaries being honored. And we want to thank you for what you do. Good?
Thank you very much, John Perrino. Appreciate it. Thank you, everyone.
Thank you. And the final thing, and I think I'm probably out of my four minutes, so I'll, I'll end right now. I don't like to go over the time. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Perrino, Mr. Rett.
Nothing at this time.
Nothing at this time.
Mr. Tobiasin?
Also, nothing at this time. Thank you.
Mr. Williams?
You have a couple of images. So here we go. This is the NISBA conference. So I have, this is me and pastor. I think we were sitting in the MBK that was hosted by Uniondale High School. Very good seminar. It was awesome. Uniondale is really, really engaged with their MBK program and they've been with MBK a bit longer than us, but we picked up a lot of knowledge and a lot of energy from Uniondale. They did an excellent job. There's another one? Okay, so it mixed up. So this is just yesterday, Middletown U Sports held their meet and greet for players for AAU basketball from grades fifth through ninth. We had about 88 kids show up, multiple coaches, great energy, great environment. We look forward to this fall season, which typically doesn't have as many kids because of modified sports and everything, but this year we, yeah, we overwhelmed with 88 kids and more to come. And that's our logo right there. So it's kind of going in different order, but, and I think there's one more. Supposed to be two more, but Mr. Ed Estrada didn't get, get the memo for my other picture. Is there one more or no? No?
Which other picture?
It was myself, Denise and Mr. Ed Estrada.
That's for the conference.
Yeah, it was before, John. It was before.
They're going to put that up for the conference.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
I got you. So they get the memo. So moving further with the MIS, registration is still open for kids, grades fifth through ninth. We like to stay away from the high school kids and let them get their opportunity in high school to build with their coaches, but from fifth to ninth, we want to build them up to the point where when they get to their high school, they'll be, they'll be well experienced and ready to go in their high school career. So, and also, I've been able to attend the intramural, after-school intramurals at Mont Hagan held by Coach Marcus and Coach Dewitt Dulson. And one day, I think there was like 70 kids in there. And it was a lot, but the kids were well behaved. They were in there working hard. And also I've been at multiple dismissals at Mont Hagan and we were just discussing that before. And the dismissal at Dominic and Redonia and Hattler and, and I'm missing somebody.
LeBron.
LeBron, there you go. Mrs. LeBron, they do an excellent job. They're completely engaged and I see that a lot, a lot of our buildings and I hear about it. So that's an important thing. And, you know, so, and Mr. Drew said the dance was the other day and my little guy was excited about that. And, you know, I think all is well. He had a good time around his friends and it's like they've got a wall of girls and boys separate, you know? It's just crazy. So they talk a good one, but you know, it's, yeah, these kids are something else. But yeah, the dance, these, these kids were excited to go and it's just things like this that are, that are so important at this time. As we get older, we look back and we're like, oh, man, I wish I went to that dance or I wish I went to the, you know, some of us missed our proms and things like that. So it's so important to hear, you know, the kids having a good time and the schools are putting on great events. So, yeah, I appreciate that and that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Williams. Want to highlight what just took place this past Monday, MIDI, Monday strengthening community partners. I just want to just commend the leadership, Amy, Mike, Camille, Mr. Bartlett, Jillian, the admin team, as well as the community who came to the event, which emphasizes that we are one Middletown and we are all working together and they're all the, they're all our kids. They're all our kids and we're not just doing it just to do it. Like I love seeing stuff like that, which comes back from the barbecues, from different things like that. It's so important to see, to see that and to be involved in that, knowing we're having discussions on what's best for our community. The next thing I want to definitely still highlight, Amy and the rest of the team as far as highlighting, taking the time to highlight our young people in this forum. Like when we do that in this forum, I think that that's so important that they get celebrated for great things. And with that being said, I want to highlight Mr. Kevin Witt and capturing the great things that go on in Middletown.
That's right.
You know, him and his team is just, is just amazing because we have some amazing people in Middletown doing amazing things. And it does not get the highlight, it doesn't get the highlights that I think it deserves. It just doesn't. It seems like it's a thing where we just want to highlight negativity. And that's what I'll see. And I'm like, wait a minute, wait a minute, there's a lot of great things going on, a lot of great people doing wonderful, amazing things and that's not shown except for by this man and his team. I could always go there to get the real story. You know, and so I definitely appreciate you so much and I appreciate all the work that the admins are doing, teachers, the coaches and the kids and the parents in this community, one Middletown. Thank you. All right, so we'll move on to the public participate, participation, the opportunity to address the board. The board would designate a portion of its meeting agenda for public comment for a period of up to 14 minutes. Each speaker will be allowed up to four minutes. The public is not permitted to discuss topics and/or matters involving specific individuals. Speakers must sign in prior to speaking. Speakers are not permitted to cede their time to other speakers. Ms. Romero?
La junta designará una parte de su agenda de reunión para comentarios públicos por un periodo de hasta 40 minutos. A cada persona se le permitirá hasta cuatro minutos. No se permite al público discutir temas y/o asuntos que involucren a personas específicas. Las personas deben registrarse y firmar antes de hablar. Las personas no pueden ceder su tiempo a otras personas.
Thank you very much. Okay, seeing that there is no takers, do we have any letters? No letters received? Superintendent updates?
Thank you. Before we get into our public participation from our administrators and the presentations, I just want to acknowledge that it is with a very heavy heart that I am speaking about the heartbreaking loss of our beloved 12th grade student TC. As we have been speaking about this week, TC tragically lost his life in a car accident on Monday night. TC was the kind of young man whose spirit left an indelible mark on the people that he met. He approached life and everybody he met with a joy, a warmth, a radiant smile. He had this ability to make a connection and light up a room. He always made you feel special. To know TC was to experience this boundless joy that he had. His friends loved him and he loved his friends. TC's memory will always be a part of us. Our hearts go out to TC's friends and family, all of us who are mourning his loss. This is a very, very difficult time for our school community. You know, there are no words. They don't seem like they're the right ones. We are feeling pain and grieving the loss of TC as well as still grieving the loss of Alejandra. What I do know is that we have to lean on each other, that we are one Middletown, one support system. I want to remind us that in the face of this deep sorrow, that we can honor our young people by treating each other with kindness and always with a smile. It is times like this when we can come together, treat each other with care, show patience and remember that we are never alone. I want to thank our school community. It's times like these when people really come out and rally and support that you get to pause and recognize that we are not alone, that we have a lot of people here rooting for us and wanting to provide care. Our young people, our educators, our staff, our administrators, it has been a really rough month. And I have been very humbled by the teams that work here in support of our young people. These teams, they're aching right now. They have lost two young people who feel like family to us and it is hard. But I do know that moving forward is what will help us to heal. And I want to thank you, all of you who have reached out, who have treated us with care and compassion and who have continued to move forward in your own sense of grief to support our young people. So I want us just to remember again to honor TC and Alejandra, to show kindness to one another, help each other where we can, and remember that one positive interaction with a young person or a colleague or a friend or even a stranger can change the trajectory of their lives. So let's continue to remember that. Thank you. And TC's family asked me to mention that they are going to honor him with a balloon release and candle lighting tomorrow night at 6:00 PM at Fancher Davich Park. And they are inviting the community to come. They're asking... They're asking for balloons that are either red, black, purple, or white to be brought. And information can be found on the community page on that. They also wanted to extend their deepest gratitude for all those who have reached out and offered support and care during this really, um, terrible time. Thank you. Okay. We are going to move on, Mrs. Adoma, um, with Dr. Connell, Ms. Poole, Mr. McCurnan, and Ms. Recio to come on up and talk about Computer Science Education Week.
So it's one that, uh, thank you for this opportunity to talk about Computer Science Education Week. I also, so Mr. McCurnan and Mrs. Recio couldn't be with us this evening, but they, um, just want to, they're here with us in spirit. So I'm going to pass it over to Dr. Connell and Mrs. Poole to talk more about Computer Science Education Week.
Good evening, Superintendent Creedon, Assistant Superintendent, Mrs. Adoma, Board members, Cabinet team. So I'm excited to talk about this. This is going to be year three, um, that we are creating activities for Computer Science Week, the first week in December. This year, we are definitely stepping up our game. We are opening the week with a Chill and Code with Us. So basically, we will, we will be inviting students to log on from their homes and engage with us, grades K through 12, in completing various coding activities. We'll be online, we'll have tech toses online, teachers will be joining us. And it's just a great way to open the week and engage with students and really kind of ramp up the knowledge and the information technology portion, um, because that's where the world is going right now. The second part of the week will be our coding competition. So scholars in grades three through 12 are invited to create their own code. Um, and with that, they will be joining us that Tuesday to present their code. We will have live judging this year, which is something new. Scholars have the opportunity to win three levels of awards. Because this has become such a big project, we have now decided that the high school will have two levels of engagement, just because we didn't think it was fair that the kids who participated for the last two years are going up against the kids that are joining us for the first time this year. Um, one of the things that I found out this morning, which was very exciting, is that in the past, we've had maybe 10 or 15 high schoolers join the competition. This year, we have 22 students from Monhegan Twin and the high school. So we are very excited this year. And again, the goal of Computer Science Week is really to engage scholars in a subject that they may not engage with, especially our K through five kids. We started Girls Who Code back in 2022. So now we really just want to amp up students' ability to engage in these types of activities. Again, as Norville says, the robots truly are coming. And our goal is to educate kids and get them ready for 21st century skills.
That's right. That's right, the robots are coming. The truth is, we can't run away from technology and impact it outside of the world. We just have to keep up and it's really hard to keep up. So what we're doing is that we're using this opportunity as a window, a window for our scholars, not just high schoolers, not just the middle schoolers, not just people who are already in courses, as a window to really start being intrigued and excited. Right? And a lot of them already start developing these literacies because they have a computer, they start playing around with it. And we're finding that even scholars who are not in the courses are doing really advanced things. So that's why we want to start off the third night with a hackathon. And one of our future ready seminars that we do during the school year is, um, ethical hacking. Right? And you really learn, because the idea is that hacking is a natural thing. And all these banks will hire people to actually learn, how do you hack the system? And so forth, because if you know how to do it, then you can prevent it. So the idea is that we're developing this, this literacy. So we're going to give challenges in a virtual setting for our scholars to go through what is an ethical hacking session. So, right, and then at the end of the week, they will, we'll see who will have, will give awards and prizes and announcements and recognitions. The fourth night, which would be, which would be, um, oh, sorry, let me just. Yeah, so, so yes, so then we have the coding competition and awards. So we'll actually get a chance to really celebrate them and all the things that they've done during that week. Um, we have the Sippin Code. That's the one before? Sorry, Chill and Code.
No, we have Sippin Code too. So this year at Carter, we try to go to a different elementary school each year. Um, the first year that we did this, we were at Maple Hill. This year, we will be at William A. Carter. Um, the Sippin Code is a fun idea I came up with our first year and we're just keeping it going. Um, and basically, we're inviting families of all ages from around the district to come to William Carter, enjoy hot cider, hot chocolate, cookies, pastries. And everybody will be able to engage with various computer science activities. Um, we have the B-bots for our little ones. Um, when I got to see the photos from 2022, they were so amazing, having seen the kids on the floor, engaging with the B-bots. Um, we will have musical coding. Our little Olivia Conno helped us with that our first year and we're keeping it going. Um, so that'll be fun as well. And then we have a new activity, which one of our instructors came up with this year called Find the Number. So each year, I feel like we get better and better. And the Sippin Code is probably my favorite, just because the kids really get to dig in, have fun, play games, and just seeing their smiles and wonder and curiosity, um, is pretty much why we do what we do.
Absolutely. And the truth is, it's, it's not just typing on, within a keyboard. It's actually automating robots. It's actually putting input and so it's, it's tactile as, right? So it's not the typical, um, just keying things in. We're really giving them an experience. Now, if you're younger, that is more attractive to you and that's kind of the audience. Let's start them younger. Let's start our scholars learning more about this very needed skill. Not only will it change what they will do when they leave high school, but it will change the economy when they get back here, because the type of jobs that they will do will be impactful, not just to them, but to their families. I think that's it. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Any questions or comments? Ms. Perino?
And, uh, uh, you know, this, uh, looking at, uh, this brochure, I call it. My heavens, you, you must have spent a great deal of time organizing this program, Norville and Dr. Conno and the rest of the team here.
Absolutely, well, absolutely. We've, um, so we started this a few years ago. And, um, and as we go along and, right, Ms. Poole has brought in a lot of exciting things that we do. Um, you know, let's change up a little bit. Let's add some, um, the Sippin Code. Let's just make it fun. Um, so we've merged a lot of the, the, the technical things with the fun, because we're trying to get an audience that's, it's not just high school and it's not just people who are interested in computers. We're trying to get the audience to be everybody in the district. Parents, young, young children, everybody to be part of this. Thank you.
Mr. Moore?
It just brings back, uh, some memories for me. Uh, when I was working with the Department of Education, we held the first 24-hour hackathon. And it was with Web A Parker, a couple of different, um, tech companies. And it just brought back a lot of memories. I would love to see that here, um, to literally code it all through the night. It took a lot of resources, but at the end, they, he was able to create, um, different, different things with the use of 3D printers and Raspberry Pis, those things that you guys are familiar with as techers. But it was a huge experience. I could definitely see that this growing into a situation where that could happen here in Middletown.
Thank you. Appreciate that.
Anyone else?
Yeah, um, great presentation. Um, as you said, Norville, um, the robots are coming.
Yes, sir.
I mean, um, we just had a recent conference, um, NISPA conference, and, um, we got a lot of information on AI and we got to interact with some of the robots. And I don't know, Denise, I don't know if you brought that up or if you got, you did, great. So, I mean, it was just, it's just a whole lot and, um, we'll probably talk about a little more. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Anyone? Excellent presentation. Um, what, what type of feedback have you been getting from the parents and different things like that?
We get great feedback. Honestly, I feel like the parents have more fun than the kids during the coding competition. Um, the parents kind of egg the kids on and remind them of things that they worked on. So the parents seem very excited and what's nice is that this is year three and so we'll get repeat parents. So their kids have stepped it up. Each year has gotten better and better. Um, and we'll also get some new parents who will join into our little coding family. So the parent participation is amazing. The kids who, um, create their projects, the parents come with them, watch them present their information. We eat with them, we engage with them. It's, it's great.
Excellent, that's excellent to hear.
Yeah, even with the Sippin Code, uh, last year, we were at Maple Hill and families were music. So the adults have just as much fun because it's, it's, it's great learning. And then, you know, families are always asking, how can we get more STEM for our kids at the lower level? So this is always a great opportunity for families to come out and just see something new. They, and then there's also tools you can use at home, so things that we're doing in school. There's a lot of websites at home that they can do this at home as well.
You know what excites parents is that you have all these coding competitions. They're free to enter. Like Google, there's one that's available all the time. They get to learn about these things. You can win $50,000 in scholarships, $30,000 in scholarships, just by playing and manipulating codes. So that always gets students, parents excited, any opportunity to, to help their, their scholars. Oh, and, and all that is available on our website. So they, they'll be able to see it. So as they get on, they'll see all the opportunities are available, not just within our school district, but anywhere in society, like opportunities to not only study, but to learn and to explore STEM more.
Well, Mark just commented, just excellent job, excellent work, because like you were saying, it's preparing our kids for the future and it's preparing them from a young age and that's what this is about. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Good evening again, Vice President Williams, Board of Education Trustees, Superintendent Creedon. So tonight, we're going to review the New York State 3-8 ELA mathematics and science data. So each spring, scholars in grades three through eight participate in New York State tests. ELA in math occur over, over two days for grades three through eight. Science is given on one day to fifth and eighth graders only. We've been utilizing computer-based testing for several years now. And at the state level, the state has pretty much, um, pushed all districts to start using computer-based testing at this point. All the tests are on time, so scholars are able to take as much time as they need. We also, um, provide accommodations for our Ls, English language learners and scholars of a 504 or IUP plan. Most of our scholars are eligible to take the, three through eight assessments with a few exceptions. For ELA, English language learners, including those from Puerto Rico, who on April 1st attended school in the United States for the first time for less than one year, and scholars who take the New York State alternate assessment are exempt from the ELA exam. For math, eighth grade scholars who are enrolled in our Regents program, which is Algebra I, are also known as honors math. And scholars who are, who take the New York State alternate assessment are also exempt. The science test is only for fifth and eighth graders. And again, exemptions are for scholars who are either in the living environment class for eighth grade and, or take the New York State alternate assessment. So I'm going to start by reviewing the data for ELA. So overall, we had 19% of our scholars who opted out of taking the ELA exam, which was a decrease from the 22, 23 school year. Um, during 22, 23 school year, we had a 25% opt-out rate. Um, what you'll also notice is as the grade levels increase, we see more of our scholars opting out of taking the exam. And next, we're looking at proficiency for our English language arts. So New York State assigns a level one, two, three, or four for state tests. The number of, of correct responses does vary from year to year. So what may equate to a one, two, or three, or four does change. We don't know that until after the exam is given. A level three or four is considered proficient. So on the graph that you're seeing, the state is represented in the light blue and the district is represented in the mitty blue. Overall, we had 28% of our scholars that took grades three through eight. ELA exam were proficient, meaning that they were level three or four. Next, we're looking at the mathematics exam results. Um, so first, you're seeing the opt-out. So we saw a similar trend with the opt-outs with mathematics. We had a decrease from 25% opt-out rate to 20%. And again, you'll see that we have more opt-outs as the grades increase. Proficiency overall, we had eight, sorry, we had 30% of our scholars in grades three through eight that took the test, meaning that they were level three or four. With our science exam, this, um, last, or the spring, so spring of, uh, so May 2024, it was the first time that we gave this spring assessment. Previously, this test was given to fourth and eighth grade. This past school year, it started with fifth grade and eighth grade. So for this exam, we had 22% of our fifth graders opt out and 27% of our eighth graders opt out. So as I mentioned, last year was the first time we administered the exam with the new standards for science. This was also the first time that the test was administered on the computer. Previously, the science exam had two components. It had a hand-on component and also had a written test. So this year, it's all one day and all on computer. Overall, we had 19% of our scholars in grades five and eight that took the test that were proficient, which again is a level three or four. I also wanted to point out the New York State School Report Card. So there has a parent dashboard that's available for families to go online and view the report cards for each of our schools. So there's a quote that says, "Results require consistency, patience, and willingness to keep going when it's tough." So we understand that the data that we present tonight is not what we all want to see. But we also want to emphasize that we have been doing a lot of work to help improve our proficiency. So our strategic plan priorities are carefully designed to address the underlying factors influencing our outcomes and provide a foundation that supports long-term growth and proficiency. Our key priorities for this school year, district culture, multi-tiered support systems of support, also known as MTSS, and attendance. A strong district culture fosters a sense of belonging and motivation and encourages scholars to engage fully in their learning and staff to commit to continuous improvement. A multi-tiered support system, a multi-tiered system of support, MTSS, allows us to tailor instruction and interventions, ensuring each scholar receives the appropriate support. And regular attendance is foundational to student success. By reducing absenteeism, we increase instruction time, giving scholars more opportunities to engage in learning and reach academic goals. So they have to be here to learn. So we've been doing a lot of work as we push towards that 95% goal for attendance. While our strategic plan provides a foundation, we are also focusing on additional targeted strategies that address specific needs identified in the data and drive more immediate gains in student proficiency. Uh, this year, we talked about our shifts in grading practices. So focusing on equitable grading practices to improve learning outcomes for all. So we spoke about shift, the shifts that were happening at our elementary level as well as our middle school level to make sure that we are assessing what kids know and giving opportunities to work towards mastery. All right, extended day instruction program is used to provide remedial and academic enrichment. All right, extended day instruction program is used to provide remedial and academic enrichment opportunities outside the school day. Our next presentation will be sharing some information about our EDI program for the school year. We also continue to provide targeted support through summer programs, including summer school, enrichment, and jumpstart programs. These programs help keep our scholars engaged throughout the summer. We offer more family engagement events ever. Um, so each year we're also, we're always increasing our offerings for families. Um, most recently, we had our trunk or treat event. We have our town halls and we have our family nights. And this year we will continue to communicate with families about the three eight testing to decrease our opt-out rate. So we are working towards that. We, most of our elementary, we have a pretty good turnout for that, but just working to get that number down for our middle schools. I want to point out that our scholars take the state test in the spring and we don't get those results back until a week or two before school starts. So throughout the year, we rely on multiple assessments to help progress monitor. Um, the first is the NWA maps. We just finished our first administration. And with that, it's a computer-based adaptive test that's used nationally. So it gives us good feedback. We do that um, in the fall. We do another administration in the winter and we do our last one in the spring. We also have our early literacy assessments in grades three through five, our writing benchmarks in grades three through eight. Um, we are still continuing for skills checks, which are informal assessments that we give after a skill is taught. And it gives our educators feedback as to where scholars are doing well and areas where they can improve. And we, at the middle school, we have midterms, final exams, and performance tasks. With regards to ELA, sorry, with regards to ELA at the elementary level, we are in year two of implementation with our Haggerty and foundations. Last year, we started for our UPK program kindergarten and first grade. This year, we added second grade. This year, we also are piling with CKLA, which is Core Knowledge Language Arts and Literacy Curriculum, which embeds content knowledge with reading skills. So what this might look like in the classroom is that there's a unit on mammals. In that unit, uh, or in that lesson, scholars would identify clue words, use to signal and con, signal a contrast or comparison of mammals. Then they would compare two nonfiction tests about mammals using a graphic organizer and then explaining their function in sentences. So we are, I'm piling that with about twenty-one teachers across our elementary school this year. At middle school and elementary levels, we are, we noticed that our scholars don't do well with constructive response. So when we look at our data, that's something that we're seeing. So we're providing more opportunities for our scholars to get exposed to short response, constructive response questions. And then we are also providing for close reading. So close reading provides our scholars to have a deeper understanding of the tests. And close reading test is analyzed by examining its content and how it's presented. So we did a lot of work with that last year and we continue to do that work with us, our scholars as well this year. For mathematics, I'll start with the elementary. We are continuing to provide training, training on the math framework, illustrative math and math in practice throughout the year, supporting our educators and becoming more familiar with the high-quality instructional practice, practices. We're also continuing to administer skills checks quarterly and we're discussing those results with our educators um, during data meetings to identify our learners and instructional gaps and provide strategies for remediation. At the middle school level, we notice our middle school educator, I apologize. So at the middle school level, one of the things that we've been noticing is that we don't have a resource. Um, so our, we have a scope and sequence that we've worked with our educators on, but we don't have a resource. And so one of the things that we've been doing this year and last year is just um, looking at different resources that are available to see if there's something that potentially could fit our need as a district. The math committee this year will also spend time designing a common set of unit assessments aligned to the New York State exam. Performance level expectations in order to ensure we are responsive to providing targeted, individualized support throughout the year. And our educators are also evaluating instructional mythologies associated with the science of reading and identify ways to integrate additional literacy practice into the mathematics instruction. So we recognize that literacy goes across all of our content areas. And so we're working to make sure we're embedding those approaches in both uh, our science, mathematics, as well as our social studies. Lastly, for science, we began using STEM scopes at the elementary level this year. STEM scopes is a fully aligned to the New York Science of Learning Standards. This resource will enhance the hands-on experiences during the science block while supporting vocabulary development, writing, and exposure to nonfiction tests. At the middle schools, we are in year two of implementing the new SITA curriculum that is fully aligned with the New York Science Learning Standards. Our educators are working to determine a set of skills across sixth through eighth grade that will build mastery of the science and engineering practices. And similar to math, we are evaluating instructional mythologies associated with the science of reading and embedding those practices into our science instruction. In closing, I just wanted to provide some information about this year's assessments. So our English language arts assessment will be given on April eighth and ninth. Our makeup dates will be April tenth, eleventh, twentys-two through the twenty-fifth. Our mathematics exam will be given April twenty-ninth and thirtieth with makeups May first through May ninth. And then our science assessment will be held on May fifth, and that's only for grades five and eight. And the makeup dates will be May sixth and ninth. Uh, we also will have a computer-based simulation. So we are required by New York State to do a simulation mid to late January. So once we get those dates, we'll share that out with the community as well. All right, any questions?
Mr. Redd?
Uh, yes, um, thank you for that presentation, Mr. Doma. Um, I just wanted to get um, your understanding, if you can give us a little bit more. And I know um, Mr. Perino here talks a great deal about um, our elementary school students and preparing them for testing so that they can continue, that continuum. As you know, they move through the middle school and the high school. Um, if you can just share a little bit about some of the early literacy initiatives that uh, will help in moving that forward.
Yeah, so I'm going to invite Mrs. Bowler and Mrs. Paul Maria up as well to talk about. So we are, so one of the things that we did uh, last year was we brought in foundations of Haggerty. And that's, we started at the kindergarten, first grade level. And we were also fortunate, we have a UPK program. They have, we also started at UPK. And that's helped, it was um, it's science of reading method. And we've already seen the gains. So I've been in classrooms in September and seeing our first graders take, you know, take their readers. And they are using the skills that they learned in kindergarten and able to sound out words. And you ask them, have you seen that word before? They're like, no. So, so I think we've already seen some evidence just in the classrooms already about that. We've heard from families about uh, the programs that we're using and just seeing how well their kids are, are reading at home. So, so we're hoping this year, we're going to, we have to span that to second grade. And, and we're, and now we have our kindergarten, first grade, and second graders, and those kids will continue to move up. So we're, you know, our hopes is that they'll have that foundational skill and we're, we're, we're be able to address those gaps at an earlier age. And so that way, as they move through those testing years, they'll have that strong foundation, which will um, help us see some gains. Um, something else that we're doing this year is uh, we are going to, well, we started using previous state test questions. So the state does release questions. And we have a platform that we're using called Linkit that allows us to use old tech, you know, these old test questions. And throughout the year, we're also providing some exposure where kids are going to use to read it on the computers. Because we noticed that reading on the computer is very different than reading on paper.
Yeah.
How you highlight, you know, how you annotate. So we're, again, trying to work with kids to get used to those skills. Uh, so when they see the state test, it doesn't feel like a, a big step. So we're using that not only to help get that experience with testing on the computer, but also to see the types of language that are used in the questions. And we just got to build their stamina up, build their confidence up uh, when they get in front of the state test.
Thank you.
Anything else?
I just got, got one quick thing.
She's going to continue.
Oh, she's done?
And then there's the CKLA, CKLA pilot. That's something that we started this year with um, twenty-one educators. So we have um, fifteen educators at grades three, four, and five. They're across um, all, all the elementary schools. And then we have uh, two educators at kindergarten, one at first, two at first grade, and two at second grade that are also. And that's a very uh, different type of program where it, it provides, um, so there's, there's video, there's read alouds, there's, there's reading, there's where kids are going through. So today I had an opportunity to go to um, Carter and visit several classrooms. So I was able to see ELA teachers um, doing lessons with vertebrates, invertebrates, um, watching an ELA teacher have a alligator and magnifying lens. So things that we typically associate with a science classroom, we're now seeing in ELA. So now when they get to their science classroom, they've had, not only they've learned these um, skills with comparing, contrasting, how to find things in the tests. They're now having that, they're seeing information now in their ELA classes. Then when they get the science, it supports the science. And similarly, there's lessons on social studies. So we saw some lessons today on the fetal system and just watching kids with their vocabulary, they're engaged. So it's just, uh, it's a great program that we've um, you know, just, we're just seeing what's out there because we, we realize that what, you know, there's things that we have to tweak. So we're just been looking, but I was um, very happy with the things that we saw in the classroom um, today.
Thank you.
I just wanted to add that it's a structured literacy program. And the wonderful thing about CKLA is that it integrates social studies, science that's embedded in the practices and everyday learning. There's a listening and speaking component, there's video, so it touch base with all modalities. And the students have opportunities for academic engagement and building language, which we know is um, something that we want to build across all grades.
I got you and build up that content, right? Yes.
Absolutely.
Familiar, yes, yeah. Thank you, ladies, appreciate it.
Mr. Moore?
Let's have a quick um, question. So you did mention that the science um, exam is now fully digital. Uh, the reason why I'm saying that is because I got some feedback from my own scholar herself. Uh, mentioned that, you know, and she actually advocated for sending letters into the administration at Monhegan, um, requesting that it goes back to paper format. And pretty strongly, um, because they just feel it's more, you know, especially with science, you know, the ability to write and, you know, get your thoughts out. Clearly, it was something more of a benefit than having to do it digitally. So is that a, a way of, or option that could be presented back or is this something from the state coming out?
It's from the state. So it was only offered in computer-based testing. So there was a lot of feedback uh, so throughout the state because the length of it took a lot of time to administer. So it was the first year we administer it. Um, so now they're, the graphing is done on the computer. So, so there's things that we have to address and that was new. So it wasn't, you know, with the first test, kind of seeing what works and there's things that, that, what's the questions that are released, we're able to look at and kind of prepare our scholars differently. But there was a lot of feedback throughout the state about just um, the, the test and the difficulty of the test and how it just took a lot longer than what, you know, the state said that it would take as well. So what we have no, unfortunately, we have no, no way, we cannot go back to um, paper with that assessment.
The only thing I want to add to that though is that the curriculum instruction team has done a wonderful job of making sure that while we recognize that it's our, you know, duty to prepare our young people to take these assessments, that we're not changing the foundational, um, you know, or the philosophy that we have about how young people learn, right? So our young people are still getting opportunities to experience those hands-on, um, you know, science explorations and writing in real ways, you know, not just on the computer. Because we know that that's how they learn best. So while we're still, you know, putting emphasis on preparing for the exam that the state is requiring us to take, we know that's the only way that the students demonstrate their proficiency in content knowledge. There's a variety of other ways that they do that throughout the school year, not just on the one point in time day.
Mr. Bison?
I'm concerned. I'm concerned looking at these scores. Um, I look at the state assessment as being a bell-shaped curve with few of our students in one and four, with the majority of our students falling in groups two and three. Am I correct there or has that changed?
It, it's not bell-shaped, it just, so as far, for the district or you're talking about for the state assessment?
For the state in general, and then if we're using it as a gauge um, of how the state did, I'm looking and that was for grades three or for uh, the third and the fourth um, group. Do they still use four, one, and two? We, we were working at one time to get our students out of that second bridge and get them into groups three and four. But I'm looking now at three and four. I'm looking, and I don't mean to be negative, I, I understand your task, I understand what you have to do. But I'm a little nervous about the percentages that I'm seeing here for gr, gr, uh, groups three and four. And in comparison to the state average.
Yes, so, and we are, like to say that we're, we're pleased with the results, right? So we, we, we work very hard. Um, so our, our, our staff, our scholars, like we were working very hard. So when we see the results, yes, it's, it's tough to look at. Um, one thing that this doesn't show us, doesn't show growth, right? So we don't see where our kids start with this data, right? So we're in the classrooms, we have the measures that we mentioned that we see where kids come in. And so when you see a one, doesn't mean that Camille has not done anything all year, right? So we have to look where kids are at.
Why?
So that's, that's one thing that uh, you know, that we are, we are working hard and, and trying to figure out how do we meet our kids. So, so I'm pointing to some of the, the things that we're doing this year. You know, it does take time, you know, and we are, but we have our kids for a limited amount of time too. So we, we understand that it's a very, you know, delicate band that we're trying to do. And then with the state, as far as the, the scores, we don't, what could be considered a, a four this year changes. And then, and as far as like the, the band, if you look at the data, the band for four could be like this for, you know, for third grade. And then when you get to eighth grade, it could be like this. So it's, you know, so we're, it's a, it's a moving market, a moving target. Um, but, but we agree, like we want to get, you know, those numbers up. We want to get our kids from ones into twos and, and so we move our twos into threes. So we are, you know, we are definitely working hard and banging our heads against the wall, trying to figure out what we are missing and trying to find new ways so that way we can get all our kids, um, you know, improve our proficiency as a district.
Well, if, even if we look, um, and I'm looking at math in grade six, we seem to take, we seem to start out in, in grade three and then we make a lot of progress in grade four. We start dropping back in grade five. And then grade six, um, the middle school age, um, if we look at six and eight, you know, that, that's a concern um, in math. Um, it's not as noticeable in the ELAs, but um, I support you. I don't, I don't want this to come across.
No.
But I am concerned when I look at these scores and say, you know, what, what more do we need to do to um, prove more of an academic success? And, and it's a test too. It's the state test. So how much do we put into that as a value mechanism um, for our staff? And I know you're working. It's not that I know you're not trying to hit, you know, the goals and objectives, but I just have to say I am concerned.
Yeah, we, so like I said, we, we definitely want to, like, our goal is to get those numbers higher.
Good.
Right?
Good.
And, and, cause that's what everyone sees, right? So regardless of what we are doing internally, the reality is like the state test scores are what's public. You know, it's, you can go to website, pull it up. And so that's, right, that's how, as a district, we are looked at. And so we, we definitely want, we don't want people to see that as, as middle town.
Thank you. I don't mean it negative at all, just as a concerned person and wanting to see more success for our students.
Thank you.
Mr. Redd?
Yes, um, Camille, real quick, um, I was just wondering what's your understanding or, or your assessment as to why kids are opting out as they go up into grades? I mean, I have an understanding, they probably just don't want to do testing. It's probably a good, you know, it's probably great to be able to have that option, but, and maybe I could ask you Drew or, or Denise or Freddie, because your kids are in the school system. You know, you know, would, yeah, would, would you prefer them to opt out or?
So I think there's, there's a, a lot, so the opt-out numbers, if you go back to probably like twenty fourteen, twenty fifteen school year, if you, I want to say around that point.
It was a tremendous amount.
Right, so there was a lot of linkage to our educators' scores. And that's when we saw a big increase in our opt-outs. So we, prior to that, we usually had a, maybe a couple of kids that would not take the exam. And then once we had that, it became almost like a movement. And the state has done a lot, state has no longer ties our educators' scores to the assessment, so that's changed. So I think some of it is just, this is what has happened historically. And it's not just our district, but in- our district, but, and so it becomes more of a thing to do. And I think when you get to the, the middle school level, sometimes the kids go home and say, I don't want to take the test, right? And so we, we do, we try, do our best that when we get those notes that come into the office, we do call the families and ask, you know, explain to them, the merits of taking the test and try to say, hey, would you consider? So we do have those conversations with families, but the families do have a right to opt out. There are some, you know, when we get to the ninth grade level, or we have eighth graders that are taking Regents, you can't opt out of those exams. So I think that's something that, for families to know that when you get to, for graduation currently, you have to pass Regents exams and there's no opting out. And there's still, if your children want to go to college, there's some schools that still rely on these standardized assessments. Graduate school, when you get into the workforce, you take tests. So I think for that standpoint, just to advocate for, to families, like please take these tests because test is just even beyond education, right? So there's a lot of, a lot of jobs, you have to go and take a test, they're on computers, taking a drive-in test, so kind of to build that, that muscle, that stamina to take a test. So it's something that we're doing a lot of work to do and educate families about what the test is, to let them know that their children are not penalized for their performance on the test. So we're trying to make it as encouraging, the state's done a lot to make it sometimes, but, you know, I think there's just a lot of it, but I think a lot of it goes back to that time period where that was linked to it and we just never, we're just trying, you know, slowly trying to pull back from that opt-out.
No, thanks for sharing that because I, that's when I pretty much retired, so I didn't really notice that, that change over where, you know, so this has been a gradual thing where just slowly people just had the option, they just opt out more and more, huh? And, yeah. And plus COVID.
If we opt out, if we opt out, is that held against us in the overall, overall percentages?
So the state does look at participation rates? So if we do fall below a certain rate, it does, you know, it could impact our funding. So that is something that they compare year to year. So that could, we could potentially find ourselves in a situation.
Well, that's going to pull these.
Mr. Williams?
Yes, speaking from my parents' perspective, I remember, so in last year, my son was in seventh grade, and that opt-out thing was a big discussion within the school and a lot of kids, oh, I'm not taking it because it doesn't do this, it doesn't do that. And my son came home and asked, and I said, you have no option, right? So you're going to take the test. Because test-taking is vital. Like you just said, Camille, it's so important in life, right? And in growth. So that's, that was my stance. And a lot of kids were kind of like persuaded by, you know, peer pressure, oh, I'm not taking it, and you think this kid is cool in it. And so I told my son, I said, you have to like separate yourself. And the fact that so many kids are opting out, that they have a choice, is just like, you know, it's tough, and that's tough on you guys, you know? So, you know, like I said, there's no option in my house. But I think you hit the nail on the head, Camille, when you said, everything you just said about the, the test-taking. My kids are way better test-takers than me, and so I push them even more, like, you know, I wasn't that good at it, so you gotta be, you gotta be a better version. So we appreciate everything you guys are doing. It's a daunting task and we appreciate you. Thank you.
Thank you.
Pastor?
So, you know, so there's, there's so many circumstances, so many reasons why, so many of these things happen, why people, why kids opt out and families opt out of these tests. I mean, there's, if you, if you step back and you take a look at it, we're dealing with middle school kids who are dealing with a whole nother level of anxiety, whole nother level, and I'm not, it's not excuses. Tests are so important, vitally important to gauge where you're at. I think for me that the, the sad part, the sad part of it is, is what you just stated, Camille, how the state, even though the option has been given to families to be able to opt out of these tests, how, how the state has still tied it into, tied it into consideration as to how they, how they evaluate the district itself overall, kind of gives me flashbacks, flashbacks or a trauma from Common Core. And, you know, you know, the, the way we evaluate, evaluate our teachers, the way we evaluate our, our district, the way we evaluate. And so Fox says something really, Fred says something really, really, really good just a second ago, was that applaud what the work that you're putting into this, because what you presented to us today, today was not just where we, where we are, but you presented what next steps are. And I think that that's important even in when we, when we look at the numbers, we look at the numbers, that we always, always have a strategy and a plan and how we're going to move forward and what we're going to do in order to increase the proficiency of our young people. I was looking, I can't remember, I can't remember, I was looking, oh, here it is, at the math, at the math, the math grades proficiency when we get, when you get to eighth grade. And, you know, I always take in consideration, having, having dealt with three eighth graders who moved on to be ninth graders, is that eighth grade is such a hard place to be. That's a tough, that's a tough moment in time. It's easier for sixth graders, for fifth graders going into sixth grade, but for eighth graders getting set to transition out of, out of middle school into high school and dealing with those tests. But I want to applaud you as we continue to move forward and keep pressing and keep trying to do what we can do to get these parents to not allow, I'm the same way Fox is, you have an option. You, you gotta take the test. But of course, you know, I'm just a dad, I'm not the boss in my house. So, you know, my daughter's the boss. My wife's not even the boss, ask her. So I, so I understand, I understand, but nevertheless, we keep moving. But thank you, these, I'm, I'm like Rose, I'm like Rose, I'm concerned, but I'm not, I'm not overly concerned. I'm pleased at, at the progress that we've made, but we're not satisfied. And I think that that's the thought district-wide that all of you have too. We're pleased at the progress that we're making, but it's not, that being pleased is not being satisfied. So that's all I have to say.
Yeah, and I appreciate that perspective, Freddie, because you would hope that that's what other people are aiming for, the long goal, you know?
Right.
To be good test-takers in life, you know, so.
Right.
Well, if you look at the percentage for eighth grade, thirty-two percent in the math there, and then go to, that was the opt-out rate, take that opt-out and compare it to the actuality, and we really got penalized and got hit bad.
Yeah, absolutely. And it's sad. That's, that's, it's sad that we would get.
It's not really a realistic picture then either. I mean.
No, you're right.
Next one to add, speaking of eighth grade, so we, I mentioned earlier that we have, you know, some of our scholars that do not take the test because they're in the honors classes.
Oh.
So last year for eighth grade, we had, for eighth grade Algebra I, which is the Regents course, we had seventy-five of our scholars that were enrolled between Monhegan and Twin Towers. This year we have a hundred and thirteen of our scholars enrolled in Algebra I, so that's just, you know, so, right, so those are kids that are now taking high school level courses in eighth grade.
Right.
So then that goes down as an opt-out?
No, it's not counted.
Oh, okay.
All right, and then, but just to point out that you won't see those numbers reflected in our, our rates.
Okay, got you.
And for living environment, which is bio, high school biology, we had eighty last year between both middle schools, and this year we have a hundred and twenty-four. So those are numbers that you're not seeing in the eighth grade.
Depending circumstances.
Yeah. So we, so we, you know, so that's, those are also kids that, we have a, it was ninety, ninety-six, I want to say ninety-six percent pass rate for both areas last year with that group of kids.
That's all, that's good.
So we're, you know, we're doing, you know, so we are, you know, so there's some, you know, some signs as well that you wouldn't see in that data.
Mr. Perino?
President Williams. Rose, may I say something?
Sure.
Okay, thank you.
Didn't you miss me, John?
No matter how you spin it, the scores are not good. Let's face it. I mean, compared to looking at them individually or compared to the state scores, they're not good. However, I know how hard you're working. I, I go into the buildings and I see how hard you're working. So there must be other reasons. And here's another thing. Our graduation rate is ninety-two percent. Am I correct on that? What, ninety-one, ninety-two percent?
Ninety-three.
So somehow, after eighth grade, there must be a, a giant leap forward because the students still have to take Regents, correct?
Yes, they do, yeah.
So they have to take Regents. So why aren't the scores not good? Certainly not because of the effort that the staff is putting in. Maybe we have to focus on the effort the students are or are not putting in on this. And you have to go back and see why aren't they putting in the effort? You have to get to the parents on this. You have to impress how important these basic skills are. The English skills and the, the ELA skills and the mathematics skills. So maybe we should put more effort on dealing with the parents on, on these matters. Everybody's concerned. I think everybody in the board is concerned with these scores. How could you not be concerned with the scores? All the money we're putting to, to students, to our educational programs? And as I say, the, the item that, you know, sort of mollifies me a little bit is the, at high school, there seems to be again this giant leap forward. So between eighth grade and into high school, something quite interesting and tremendous is happening that allows us, students who did not score well are graduating and are taking Regents and are succeeding in the Regents and the school testing. So I don't blame it on the staff, believe me.
Yeah.
Because you're putting a lot of work into this. I see this, all the efforts you're putting in here. I think we have to be concerned with getting to the parents. It's not a blame game. It's perhaps trying other avenues. And I know we, we've sort of switched from whole language to phonics. Am I correct on that now?
Yes.
So on the phonics program and perhaps that will increase our, our scores. So you're doing a good job, you're doing what you can do, you have all these initiatives, you have the extended day programs, you have various other programs. So, you know, we just, we, we just have to somehow, in the elementary grades, get these scores up. And if you need any more help, I'm sure members of the board, if you need anything else, I'm sure we would agree to, agree to any programs that you want to put in. Very important. This is the basis of education.
Yes.
And we can have all the feel-good programs you want, but if they're not mastering the skills, all is for naught, believe me. So that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Yeah, Mr. Perino, you bring up a lot of really good points, and I want to thank you for, you know, wrapping it around to graduation, which is, you know, the hallmark for us, and it's, you know, a ninety-three percent graduation rate, which is outstanding and far exceeds what the state is, I'm doing with similar student demographics. And I think the important point is that even the state is recognizing that, you know, there is something that isn't exactly right. You know, it almost feels like the state is in a little bit of an existential crisis at this point. And the positive movement around that is that they are asking for feedback and have been seeking out districts to provide information, which is exactly why they came up with the graduation pathways measure, right? They are recognizing that one test at one time on one day is not the appropriate demonstration of proficiency, which is why we recognize, and Mrs. Adoma and her team started out by saying, listen, these are not scores that we want either. However, they do not tell the story of proficiency in this district. This tells what some students did on one particular day on a standardized assessment, which doesn't demonstrate knowledge and skills. So we are really putting our effort, energy and emphasis into pedagogical practices, assessments of demonstration of proficiency over time, and graduation pathway performance, which is that students demonstrate mastery in a variety of ways. Fifty percent of our scholars are graduating with college credits. We're closer, just as Mrs. Adoma described, to an Algebra for All effort, where our young people are getting experienced mathematics success in middle school. So there's much for us to be proud about. This is one piece of our story, but not the story. So we recognize your energy and your emphasis and your concern, and we're right there with you, digging in to do this work, but this certainly isn't the entire picture.
And that's the thing, for, for me, it's exciting. Because I come from the world of assessment, diagnosis, then treatment. I know the importance of the assessment, and that's what your presentation was about the assessments, and narrowing those assessments down to see exactly what's going on. And I know the importance of that. You have to start there, and it's not going to change overnight. That's just, it just doesn't work that way. I come from the world of two measurements, one cut. You understand what I'm saying? So I know this is just not that type of thing. So I'm excited just hearing the things that you were talking about as far as with data, with skill checks. Because now I know, I see you separating the pie and seeing exactly what needs to be done with who. And that's where we're at, that's where we are right now. So it's not going to reflect in the scores right now. No, of course it's not. But I see the work that you're doing, and this is the work that needs to be done so that you, when you do do the work, it's going to be sustainable. It's not just going to be some smoke and mirrors, you just see one thing. No, now we got it. Now we got exactly what needs to be done so that we can sustain it. And that's how I see it, and I'll commend you on that comprehensive, detailed, specific report about the assessments that you're doing, the data that you're collecting, and how you're working with the families, and the measurements that you're using. Because like I said, it's not reflected, may not be reflected in the numbers, but there were certain things that you were saying, like, no, we see the measurement that's not reflected in this number. So that type of thing gets me very excited. So I just want to commend you and your team for the work that you were doing.
Are these tests only for students in New York State? Does that, the tests that our students are taking?
Yes, so it's a state, it's a New York State specific test.
Okay.
All right, so just want to thank you on behalf of our teams, our administrators as well as our staff. So thank you again for, you know, just your understanding and continuing to work with us with this, this area. So with that said, we wanted to talk about our extended day instruction programs. So behind me, I have a lot of our team. All right, so I have, at the elementary level, I have Mrs. Bowler, Mrs. Hall Murray, Mrs. Sanchez. At the middle school level, Mrs. Frederick, Mr. Merritt. At the high school level, we have Dr. Connell, Mrs. Coons and Mrs. Poole. So there, together, we're going to talk to you about our extended day instruction programs that are happening. So that was one of the ways that we are, again, trying to provide support to help work towards proficiency. So our extended day instruction programs, we use a lot of acronyms, so EDI, but extended day instruction is just, for most part, after-school instruction. So we have had programs, this year we actually have some programs that are happening. We're trying at Presidential to have a morning session because of the late start, and so we actually have families, a lot more families that way, as well as the afternoon. And then we also are working towards getting our Saturday program back up and running here at the high school. So it's both, right now, we're working on both remedial as well as enrichment programs. And so again, you'll hear more about that from the rest of the team as to what's happening at the different levels. Most programs are an hour after school, and again, at Presidential, we are doing an hour before. Again, at Presidential, we are doing an hour before school, an hour after school, same exact program. The funding for this does come from our Title IV Federal Grant this year. All of our programs are free, so we don't charge extra for families to participate. Provide bus for transportation and we also provide snacks for our scholars that stay after school. So I'm going to hand it over now to the elementary team to talk about our elementary programs.
So we have academic support. We have engaging activities that just reinforce skills in literacy, mathematics and STEM. It's offered Thursday through Tuesday, sorry, through Thursday for one hour.
And as Camille shared, we also have enrichment opportunities as well. They're called our Legacy Maker Academy. This is offered throughout the year in a rotating schedule of all different enrichment activities such as coding. This year we have culinary as well that just started and music. And this is just to spark the joy of learning through hands-on experiences.
And I have the great pleasure of going over the contact information. So families can reach out to the colleagues, the elementary team, which comprises Elizabeth Bowler, Tiffany Hall, Barbara Recio and myself, Evelyn Sanchez. And our emails are there as well.
So something we have worked very closely this year for ELA as well as for STEM is to make sure that we have different sprints, different cycles throughout the year so, that are completely aligned across all the grade lines in all of the schools.
Okay, good evening, everybody. So I'll talk about the first two. We have extended day walk-in support. It's Monday through Thursday, 2:30 to 3:30. It's a flexible time for kids to drop in, get some work done. If you remember during the summertime, we talked about Grading for Equity and the challenges that some of our scholars face at home getting work done. This is a nice, quiet spot from the focus, dig into the work, work one-on-one or small group with some of the educators and really kind of get down to business. Second is Language Bridge. It's a really cool program where we target our entering emerging scholars in the buildings and our newcomers as well, regardless of their language proficiency. It offers a blend of language acquisition, home language arch, which is ELA instruction in their home language, bilingual math instruction. And also just provides targeted support, helps strengthen their language and academic skills kind of simultaneously, really kind of leveraging translinguaging there. That's offered Monday through Thursday, same thing as extended day walk-in support, so 2:30 to 3:30.
And then launching next week, we actually have our targeted learning academies. So this is an opportunity where scholars are personally invited to specific learning academies connected to math and reading, again, using the MAP assessment scores from fall and winter to provide targeted instruction. So there are usually five-week sprints. And during those five weeks, again, scholars stay after school and get that targeted instruction for those specific domains connected to MAP assessment. And then in addition to that, we do have Regents prep. So as you heard before, we have a lot of students who are enrolled in a Regents course. So typically, starting around January, they're provided preparation for those exams, specifically living environment and algebra after school. And then one program we're super excited about, that started last year, was our pre-accelerated prep. So halfway through the year, we look at scholars or recommend scholars who might be interested, but also be ready to take on the accelerated pathway. But we don't just want to place them in the accelerated pathway. We want to ensure that they're successful in that pathway. So this pre-accelerated prep offers them those essential pre-requisite skills in order for them to be successful in the accelerated pathway. And again, our contact information is below. So I'm Gabriela Frederick. Terrence McKeonan is not here today. And then we have Fred Merritt.
So since starting here, Norville, Rachel and I have been very intentional about revamping the EDI program at the high school. And along with those revamps came the content-specific classrooms that we're now running. The homework help room is just specifically for homework help and within that room, we have at least one instructor from every content area to support our scholars. I was actually up there last week and to see how well the scholars are engaging with the teachers. They're doing homework. They're getting tutoring. They're getting support from classmates. They're getting support from teachers. So the homework help room, I think, has definitely had a huge impact on how scholars are engaging with the content on a daily basis. In addition to that, some of the data that we saw in regards to students being eligible to take the science Regents was the lack of lab minutes. So in order to be able to sit for a New York State Science Regents, students have to accumulate a certain amount of lab hours and they also have to complete state-mandated labs. One of the things that we started last year was a Science Lab Make-Up EDI Day. This year, we are offering two different content areas. We have Earth Science and Biology and we will begin that December 4th. In addition to that, we have different content rooms. For Algebra I and Biology, we offer not only our English-speaking student support, but we also have our bilingual students present. Every day, we have teachers available to support the students. And one of the great things I love about this year is that we were able to bring back the late session. So the benefit of the late session is, as you guys know, we have students that go to Bosie's and when they come back, the first session is already completed. This year, our Bosie students will also be getting support Monday through Thursday from 3:30 to 4:30. So I think that's a huge initiative because our kids that go to Bosie's still need that content and Regents support throughout the school year.
Thank you. Good evening. So we have tried a few new things the last couple of years with EDI, though we've called it some, we're calling it something new. We have had collab space help for our scholars for many years. So we continue to appreciate all of the support and able to provide that for our scholars after school. So thank you. This year, one of the things that we are doing new is a college applications camp. So offered after school in the fall to start on Tuesdays and Thursdays, seniors can stay after school and get help with their college applications, filling out the paperwork virtually on Naviance and the Common App, as well as getting help with their personal statement or their college essay. So those sessions are still ongoing and we'll probably do another session in the fall for the rolling admissions for student, or sorry, in the winter, for rolling admissions. We are continuing our SEAL of Civic Readiness Initiative at Middletown High School. So students can pursue a pathway option for pursuing the SEAL and educators can support students on Wednesdays after school as they, you know, provide the documentation to present to the committee. And what I'm really excited about, the new one for this year, is our Social Studies Learning Experiences. So as we know, at the secondary, at the high school, we've really, really worked to increase learning experience for students inside of the classroom as well as outside of the classroom. It helps students build their background knowledge, which makes them stronger readers and can help them perform better on all of their Regents exams and just in life when they have better reading skills. So one of the ways that the Social Studies Department is trying to increase that background knowledge is by providing learning experiences. So our goal is about once a month after school to have a different event where students can learn about different cultures, things going on in history. We had our first one last week with Dia de los Muertos celebration. And our next event is going to be November 19th and it's focused on the Gettysburg Address. So that one's really exciting. And lastly, just to share some information about the Language Bridge program. So these are for students who benefit from support from an ENL educator in order to just improve and strengthen their listening and speaking skills. And through this targeted support, you know, students are really, really getting help strengthening their English language skills in order to perform better in all of their content areas. And I'll kick it over to Dr. Connell for some last logistics.
Yeah, and I'm not going to go over the contact information. Just want to say this. The truth is, the message is clear and the word that's prevalent among this team is equity. And every day we have in our classrooms, every scholar, all with a different story. The same assistant doesn't work for student A and student B. Everybody needs something special, something different. And that's why we do this work. That's why we continue to plan and design and to make sure. And for us, it starts with the data. It starts where they're coming from. So we spend a lot of time looking through data as we just, as we look in the first eight years of schooling. We identify where those needs are. And one of the things that we found out is that it's really essential for us to not just sporadically create a program, but schedule it. So we've added a 10th period on the master's schedule. So the guidance, we identify what they need, what subject, what content area, what are the skills. We meet with the cohort principals. The cohort principals partner with us, with their deans and their guidance counselors, partner with the parents, make sure everybody knows there's a 10th class on your schedule, which means that when the bell goes at 2:25, you're not leaving here. You are reporting somewhere else. And everybody knows that. Your dean, your cohort principal, your guidance counselors and mommy and daddy. Everybody knows. And I think that's one of the most important part of things that we're doing. What we're doing is purposeful, it's thoughtful and we know that everybody needs some support. And it's not, there's no need to be ashamed of the support. We all need a little help sometimes and that's what it's there for. And I'm telling you, it's refreshing just going through and we, going through the data because the scholars who attend, they are successful. And I think that's one of the things that's important. So if, if we know that, then our job is to get them to attend and they will be successful. Thank you.
Oh, so in case you're not sure of when your scholar should attend, we, and if anyone in the room wants to leave with a flyer, we have some printed. We have schedules available. Nice. We'll see you there. And please continue to, you know, families, students, if you're watching, please continue to check the morning announcements, check your Google Classrooms. There are lots of opportunities to engage and to learn and to improve and to enjoy and have fun at school. So please join us. Thank you.
And just to add one more thing, EDI doesn't just stop at 4:30, right? We have some amazing instructors who create Google Classrooms and those Google Classrooms are populated with assessments that the students take. They're also populated with extra resources and Regents review materials. So in addition to the data we collect on a daily basis from classrooms and state data, this program also is a huge source of data, which allows us to, again, implement the MTSS interventions and that 10th period has been a huge addition.
And just in closing, just want to talk about two of the programs. So Mrs. Coons mentioned the college application. So that stemmed off of something that we did this summer. So we did a college application boot camp. So we didn't get the 10s we wanted for the first one, but we went to, you know, again, we're going to operate again, but we wanted to provide that same opportunity for scholars during the school year to help them with that process. And then our, last year, we also did our Saturday program. So we are working on the logistics of that. So we hope to have more information for you soon about the starting times for our Saturday programs as well. Any questions?
Questions, comments? Mr. Perino?
You know, this presentation just made my point that tremendous opportunities for the students. Setting these up, I can't think of any more you can be doing in this regard, the extended day institutes and the various instructors available to help the students. You know, I believe this is unparalleled in the area. And I want to thank our Assistant Superintendent for instruction because I'm sure you coordinate all this, Camille. And so it's, it's an excellent program. The opportunities are here, as you pointed out. Now you just have to take advantage of them. Students have to take advantage of them. Parents have to encourage the students to take advantage of these programs. So, you know, the old saying, you can provide all, all the programs, but if students aren't willing and parents aren't willing to encourage the students, then it's for naught. But good job, excellent job.
Anyone else? Questions, comments? Mr. Williams?
The college application camp is, that is so essential with these kids. I mean, we have, in the building alone, correct me if I'm wrong, 26, 2700 students in this building? So, you know, counselors and the guidance that the kids get, you know, a good friend of mine, Mr. Everton Brown, he's in the College and Career. And, you know, we have two, two really good people in there and thousands of students, right? So that opportunity to get the, and that's, that's a task in itself. A college application is not nothing, you know, it's not too easy if you don't have guidance. So that, I just want to commend you guys on that. I've never heard of that before and I think it's an excellent idea. So thank you.
Yeah, definitely. I totally agree with Mr. Williams and just the things that you are implementing in just all stages, that's intentional. You know, because when we start talking about, we were talking about this in the diversity committee the other day as far as with the different cultures and different subcultures, whereas maybe my parents' education really wasn't top tier. Is that my fault? You understand? But how y'all, y'all are understanding that and y'all are reaching out to the family members and getting the kids involved and also getting the family members involved and getting excited about education. And that's the real work, you know, for our school district, for Middletown. And I just want to commend you once again on the work that you're doing and I'm looking forward to continue to hear the great things. Thank you so much.
All right, thank you.
Okay, the last thing before I turn this section of the meeting back over to the board, I just want to take a moment to acknowledge the Middletown Police Department, really great partners to us. They came to us a few months ago and told us that they had an opportunity to extend to us some funding for us to do some special programming. And we felt really honored that they wanted to partner with us and provide this opportunity for us to come together as true partners to support our young people. So with the funding that the Middletown Police Department has provided to us, we're going to be hosting a variety of programs and special events for our young people in our community. And so the first one that we have is coming up. We're going to be holding an assembly program for parents, guardians and adult members of our school community as well as then our young people. But the focus on my information sharing tonight is for our community presentation. So the community presentation is called Breaking the Cycle. Information went out about this to our whole school community earlier this week. The Breaking the Cycle presentation is a presentation that features personal stories of individuals who overcome conflict through forgiveness and restoration. It addresses critical issues surrounding mental health needs of our youth and the importance of asking for help. The difficult topic of suicide will be covered as well as implications and decision-making and gang violence. So Wednesday, November 13th, which is the evening of our Wednesday Family Academy, from 6:00 to 8:00 p.m. here at Middletown High School in the auditorium, will be our first Breaking the Cycle presentation. Pat and Amory Delicio, who are a family and presenters from the Breaking the Cycle presentation program, who live locally in Orange County, lost their son to suicide. They are going to share their story with parents, guardians from our community. There'll be representatives from the Orange County Department of Mental Health here who also present information about clinical mental health resources that are available in the county and in our school buildings. This is a session that is only designed for parents, guardians and caregivers. This is not a student session. So we are inviting our school community to come out next week, Wednesday, November 13th, from 6:00 to 8:00 p.m. to hear this really- from 6:00 to 8:00 p.m. to hear this really moving presentation. Again, we're honored to have Pat and Ann Marie come share their story. Their courage in speaking out about this really difficult topic aims to foster understanding and support. We recognize that this is a particularly sensitive topic for our school community right now, and it may feel that this is not the right time to talk about it. But when we dug into this and spoke to clinicians and researchers, there is never a right time to talk about this. So we are going to move forward, knowing that their story will have the ability to impact someone, and that we have services available in our schools and in our county to help navigate this difficult topic. So I hope our families consider joining us on Wednesday evening at 6:00 p.m. here at Middletown High School.
All right. Thank you very much. Now, we're going to go into the board members' conferences, professional development share out, the 2024 NISBA convention. Who would like to start? Ms. Romero?
I have some pictures that I want to share. A few of us attended the New York State School Board Convention, and these photos summarize the great experience, including informational presentations, team activity and collaborations, meeting a robotic AI Sophia, and having our past and present, and present presidents on a panel representing our mission and ensuring no child is left behind in the education system.
Good, okay. Mr. Perino?
I did the convention virtually, and it was a, two days, and I enjoyed every second of it, even though it was very demanding. As I said at the last meeting, it went, it went from 8:00 to about 5:30, and there were no breaks at all. I mean, it just kept going and going and going. I'd never had that in graduate courses, postgraduate courses, but I, I liked it. One of the items, of course, I, I saw the, we had the Sophia, the bot, the robot, and it was very interesting. I, I think one of the points students have to remember, if you're dealing with these, these are machines. They do not have, not yet anyway, human reasoning. The next generation supposedly will have this human reasoning. So what I'm saying is just be careful. There was an incident, an unfortunate incident, where a young man developed a very close friendship with one of these robots. And I, I guess he was talking to the robot, and he said, again, these robots are programmed now. So he said, should I commit suicide? And the robot said, that would be fine. And there it was. So be careful with, if, if you're dealing with AI, and it's a very interesting subject. I like reading about it and the articles, but again, caution is the, you should be very cautious when you're dealing with it. So that's, that's one of the things that, as the Sophia was going through her bag of tricks, that's one of the things that I was very concerned about. All the sessions were good. I have a whole notebook full with comments by the various presenters. Just thinking about one, one of the presentations concerned the threats to safety in a school setting, and the point was made that from internally, these just don't happen. There are signs of a, of a student becoming, perhaps, developing a psychosis or a very serious psychological problem. So you have to be very careful here. All in all, it was an exceptionally well-planned and well-executed convention.
Mr. Redd?
Yes, ditto to what Mr. Perino said. There were some really great workshops. We got together, we went through quite a few of them. Denise demonstrated some of the things going on with AI, and, but for the most part, I kind of rallied around the workshops involving mental health. And just to give a couple of takeaways, I was talking about the fact that we need to demonstrate ways to show that there should be no stigmas around, attached around mental health, so that kids can recognize that it's okay to talk to somebody if you're not feeling good. I thought another good takeaway was have students create their own risk behavior survey, you know? Have them be a part of it, because whenever you make them a part of the learning, they can come up with some things that, that we might overlook. So that, as well as a couple of things, we must identify the warning signs. And I like the phrase they use, they said, keep an attentive eye, you know, always looking at the student, seeing and making sure that they're, you know, emotionally, you know, mentally, you know, in a good state. And thank you for posting that up, sure. One thing that was really good, and I want to share this, and I, I guess I'll pass this on to you, Amy, as well. This was something really good from the Buffalo School System on Crisis Prevention and Response Teams. It's my mental health support plan. And, you know, it has some great questions, like, when I feel stressed, here are three things that I can do to feel more calm, or three people I can reach out to when I'm struggling. So I think it's a really good piece there. It has also a scan there that you could look at. And if you turn on the back there, it also has some coping skills. And I got to tell you, this is not just for students, it's for adults too, you know? I looked through a couple of these things, and I said, okay, I could work with that. And so again, I'll pass this on, and that's all for now. Thank you.
Thank you. Freddie Williams?
Yes, great experience. And what I would want to, you know, focus on is that last year, we went with five, right, up to Buffalo. And this year, we went with six, and I'm, yeah, six, and we had Mr. Perino virtually, so we really had seven engaged in this board conference. And, and if you, you know, look at the other districts, there wasn't that kind of number. So just how engaged we are and how we pour into the district, I think that means a lot. And a lot of people were saying that also. They were seeing like, oh, you guys have six, six people up here. Like, wow, like, that's... So I think that, that really, that really shows how much we, 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 how important we think that the work we do is. I was able to attend, there was a picture of myself and Pastor, the MBK seminar, which was, was, what I said before, was hosted by Uniondale High School in Long Island. And they did, yep, they did, there we are. And I don't know if you, this guy's known me since I was even here. So it's more than just, you know, me and, me and Pastor being up there. We have good conversations. He's been a great mentor to me, and like I said, he's best friends with my older brother. Not going to say how older, but... But, um, yeah, we sat and we, 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 we kind of had it, thought we had it all mapped out. And Uniondale was throwing these ideas out there and the community engagement, and we, we, we learned a lot. And we got a lot of ideas that we're going to bring to Everton and Ken, the directors of MBK, and on the advisory board, myself, Mitch, Andrew, Kurt. When we sit down, we'll, we'll go over that. It was really enlightening to, and they had their fellows, I think they had four fellows up there, right?
They had four.
Four, and they were completely engaged. And what was cool is that their four fellows mentor middle school kids, which I thought was really neat. And they go on trips together, so as, as, as a unit, so I thought that was really cool. That was one thing. And then going on to the Black Caucus meeting, which myself and I seen Kurt and Drew and Pastor and Ed had, had a great speaking roles within that Black Caucus meeting. That was enlightening. And to see the progress that's, and the planning that's, that's ahead was, that was exciting. And then I also did a school safety seminar. And what I liked is that we were kind of bumping into each other, like, as we're coming at it. We didn't all do, oh, we're all going to go do this group thing. I would see Kurt in the elevator, and I'd see Drew walking by, and then, you know what I mean? And, uh, it was just a really good environment, good energy, to be around thousands of people with similar mindsets and goals. And, and, and I, I will never, I don't think I'll ever miss another one. You know, I, my first one was last year. This is my second year in a row. And I also did, so we all went, yeah, we all went to the small city school luncheon, which was awesome, and gained a lot of information there. But overall, it was a great trip. I don't know if they put up the picture of myself, Denise, and Ed. Yep, and I had, we were just walking back, strolling back. We definitely got our steps in, I'll tell you that, which was cool after you want to walk a little bit. And then I, I was peskering Ed for one that had me, Drew, and Kurt on the Monday dinner. I didn't get that one. I know Ed is flying around and doing his thing. But overall, great experience, and I believe it's back in the city again next year, right? I'll bring better walking shoes this time, right? Yeah, right? Yeah. But a great experience and great building, you know? We had our downtime, we were able to watch the, what, the Liberty game, right? And, and the Yank, no, the Mets were, yeah, I think the Mets were actually in it at that time, and Ed was a little distraught about that, what happened with that. But it was great team building and any school board anywhere. And we actually ran into local school board members also. Mrs. Williams, Washingtonville, right? Her first name escapes me. Shawna, Shawna Best from Pine Bush, a gym, and it was just a great experience. Even the superintendent from Washingtonville met him for the first time.
Met a saint from every place.
Yeah, meant, like, and, and it's, but I don't think we got outnumbered. I'm just going to say that. You know what I mean? I think Middletown, Middletown rep the, you know, the, the most and, and the hardest. So overall, great experience, and that's what I got. Thank you.
Thank you. Pastor?
So I'll talk first about the experience, the experience, it was a wonderful experience. I haven't missed one of these meetings since I've been on this board, and, and it was exciting for me because normally it was just a few of us that would, that would go. But it was exciting for me the last two years to be able to have more of you that go, to be engaged. I think that the, that the, the things that we learn, the interactions, the networking, but also, also, I've got to say, this is just the camaraderie, the fellowship is so vitally important to how we operate and how we move forward. And being able to connect with so many other board members, I, I know you guys saw, once, once we got there, how many board members that I, that I've known from over the years from all across the state, and now you guys know them. And, and so it's wonderful to be able to compare notes, to compare differences, that even though we're, even though we come from maybe different types of districts, many of our issues parallel. And so I, I won't speak so much about the sessions, I, the sessions so much, except to say that I've been very involved with the Black Caucus of school board members, of which we are, we are members of the Black Caucus, not just as individuals, we're members as a district, as a board. And so as, as they are in the process of rebuilding, Ms. Joyce, Ms. Joyce, who has been the executive director and the founder of the Black Caucus of school board members, who has been dealing with many health issues the last year or two, as we're, we're planning on moving and doing some other things, want to keep her in our thoughts and our prayers. Let me get to the business part of things, because as the official, as the official delegate, NISBA delegate for our district, I also was a part of the annual business meeting, which was at the beginning of the month, which came and brought everything in, into alignment when we got to the convention. That business meeting, there were, there were more than 350 delegates, and we, we were, we had 37 resolutions to bring, to be considered. There were 25 of those resolutions were recommended by the Resolutions Committee, and there were 12 that were not recommend, recommended. But at the end of the night, after, after almost six hours, at the end of the night, passed 26 of those resolutions. I want to say this, is one of the resolutions that was not recommended. The Sullivan West, I believe it was, who was the, were the authors of that resolution, made an impelling, compelling, a compelling argument. And, and so the, the rest of the school districts jumped on and passed that resolution. I want to say this about, I want to say this about NISBA, is that most of us, we go to the, we go to these meetings, and we know that NISBA does so much training, they have so many training opportunities for us as, as boards, so that we can enhance our boardmanship, and we can grow and we can learn. But one of the greatest parts of NISBA is its advocacy. And so that's why these resolutions were so important. They set the standard for what NISBA will be advocating to the state legislature. It's not passing law. I had to remind somebody in the business meeting that we're not passing law, we're not passing legislation. We're passing directives, we're passing ideas on, on what we want NISBA to advocate for. One of the biggest things that NISBA has been advocating for surrounds a lot around, around mental health, surrounds a lot around equity, equity. And so I, I want to applaud NISBA for the work that they, they've been an invaluable resource to us. And then, so I'll say this, and then I got one last thing to say. I want to thank all of you, the first, the first meeting of October, for your support, or was the last meeting, I think it was the last, last meeting, for your support in my candidacy for the Area 9 directorship. Though, by, though, all of those votes from around the state, from around the region or the area will be in, are due to be in by 5:00 tomorrow, right? 5:00 tomorrow, and we'll know what the results are by Saturday. Regardless of how it turns out, I just want to thank you all for your support here in Middletown, and, and then the support from around the county. All 17, all 17 of the school districts here in Middle, in, in Orange County also, also supported. So we'll see what happens. Lastly, last year, Mitch, we were the, we were the Middletown Five. That's what they've been, that's what they've been calling us, the Middletown Five. We, we, we set a standard at the, at these conventions. They look for us. This year, this year, we're the Middletown Six. The Middletown Seven, but they call us the Middletown Six. I got stopped, I got stopped by a board member from, from Kingston, who said, Pastor, stop. I've been, I've been trying to get to you all day long. He says, I just want to take a picture with you. I wish, where's the rest of your team? Where's the rest of your crew? I want to take a picture with them. I, I, I said that because I want to applaud, I want to applaud all of you. They're talking about Middletown all over the state, from Buffalo all the way down to Long Island, they're talking about Middletown. And it's not the negative stuff, it's all the positive stuff that's happening. And that, and a lot of that goes to, a lot of that is not just about this board, but it's about our administration and the teams that we have here in Middletown. And I want to applaud them, I want to applaud all of you for your hard work, this labor of love. We don't get a salary, but it's a labor of love, and so we continue to do it. And so my hope is, is that the people that live here in Middletown would greater appreciate what they have. Sometimes you don't appreciate it until you lose it. And as long as we're... And as, as long as we're sitting here on this board, we're not losing any of it. And so, um, we're gonna keep moving forward. It was a wonderful convention. John, thank you so much for participating virtually. That, 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 that speaks volumes, um, to sit there, um, to sit there at that screen and, and to, to, to stay engaged. And so I applaud you for that, uh, and, and, and all the hard work that went into that. So thank you. Um, I'm excited, I'm excited about, um, where we're going and we'll see what, see what we have, what happens. I hope that, I hope that Drew, I hope you enjoyed your, I know you went to the Leadership and Education. I hope you enjoyed your first time at, at the big convention. Um, and I, and I said this, there was a time when I, when we would go to these meetings and I would be the tallest one in the room, but now I'm not. So Drew, Drew's the tallest one in the room now. So, um, I have to, I have to, uh, you know, succeed and had to, had to let you, let you have that title. So, thank you.
Thank you, Pastor. So I'm gonna move on to Board of Education Committee reports. There's, uh, any committee reports?
You want me to, first of all, Mitch, I want to thank Crystal Monchuria District Clerk for, uh, setting that up, uh, for me, the virtual, uh, conference. She always does a fine job with, uh, things like that, believe me. Uh, do you want me to go over those now, Mitch? I have a couple of committee reports. Is the hour too late for you or what would you like me to do?
Um, yeah, go over it.
Okay. Uh, yeah, we had a, uh, uh, two committees meet and we met, as you know, on the same day. Uh, so everybody knows exactly the times. The, uh, we picked a Wednesday and the first committee, uh, meets from nine to ten and the other committee meets from ten to eleven. We have the, uh, uh, Facilities Committee with Bill Bartlett and we have the Safety and Security Committee with Lenny Zapka. Uh, let me just take the, uh, uh, Facilities Committee first. Uh, members present, a superintendent was present, Ms. Creedon, uh, of course, Bill Bartlett, uh, our, uh, member Joe Grimfeld, Arts Cleaners, uh, John Williams, Bishop Williams was present. Um, also, uh, Mrs. Schwab is joining the, uh, uh, Facilities Committee. She'll be at our next, uh, meeting. She's done a lot for the district. Uh, one thing we have to remember when we talk about the, uh, facilities of this, uh, district, we have over one billion dollars of assets, one billion dollars of assets. Uh, employees, we have close to sixteen hundred in various capacities. And I think our, uh, number of students, I want to get this as fairly close as possible, is approximately seventy-five hundred. What is it, seventy-four, twenty-five, seventy-five hundred? Um, so with saying all this, we owe it to everyone to present the, uh, to do the best job we can with our facilities. And, uh, we do this. The custodial staff and the buildings and ground staff, uh, creates a very nice, uh, learning environment. Um, a couple of impressions, uh, we are completing more in-house projects without going out to higher, uh, than in the past. Uh, our guys, uh, are very proficient in heating, ventilation, air condition, air conditioning. We've hired a electrician, so, uh, we're saving money there. Um, and, uh, could, uh, just some of the examples, what we're doing in-house. Let me just take one. Uh, for example, uh, the, uh, high school, uh, this building, our guys constructed two offices. We converted the three, uh, collaborative spaces to offices. We placed two pool packs. This is all in-house. Heat exchangers, supply fans, replaced H A, H A V C unit, uh, replaced compressors, we replaced, uh, 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 R T U seven compressor, which is quite a bit of work. And we replace, uh, and, uh, we replaced some of the underground wiring. So we're doing a, a lot of in-house. I could go on and on with the, uh, with the various scores, but because of the, I'm not gonna do that. Bill presented a, uh, a good, uh, report on all the, uh, what we're doing with all the buildings at the last meeting. Uh, going on to the, uh, uh, Safety and Security Committee, um, the Lenny Zapka, of course, uh, Dan Hagby, uh, uh, and Dave Green, civilian members, and Barbara Kerr, because it's a Health, Safety and Security Committee. Um, again, on, uh, exact, uh, uh, Lenny went over the staffing, the security staffing at the high school and the various staffings. For example, in this building, we have forty-three, um, uh, members of our security staff and we have two SROs and on and on. We have SROs in each of our buildings. Um, also, in, in addition to his, uh, security, uh, Lenny Zapka is responsible for fire and safety. And, uh, we received an excellent report on our fire inspection this, uh, fall. And it hasn't always been the case, but it, it's been certainly, there's a hundred percent improvement, uh, uh, some of the additional products. We've been installing, uh, we, uh, installing new access slots in each building over the summer and getting rid of some of the keys, which have probably been in service for about twenty or twenty-five years. So Mr. Zapka made the point and a very good point to staff members, keep the doors locked. Do not prop outside doors open or even classroom doors. That's where the trouble can begin. Um, and just to top this off, both Bill and Lenny have asked to be presenters at statewide conferences. And I believe Bill has attended and Lenny is, uh, uh, if he hasn't attended, he's about to attend. So, um, again, I don't ever let, and Bishop Williams let, uh, alluded to this. I'm not gonna let a few individuals who don't follow the rules define this district. I refuse to do that. There's so many positive things, positive programs in this district. We've had examples this evening. There's no place for negativity with, and this number of students and staff, you're gonna have incidents. You're running a little community here. So, uh, again, I'm finished with the reports and, uh, I think our next, uh, meeting, unless we have, unless we have emergency meetings, will, uh, be at the end of December, beginning of January. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Perino. Mr. Redd?
Oh, yes. I'll be brief. I just want to share on a couple. I'll be brief. I just want to share on a couple of committees that, um, met, I met with, uh, recently. Uh, the Wellness Committee, uh, David Coats, um, is the chairman of that. And, um, we was, uh, discussing more or less building level teams, having them in place in all the buildings, program alignment across the campuses. Um, we also had a big discussion around meals, um, just continuing to see that we provide a variety of meals that will sustain our kids, particularly the ones that are in after-school, extended day programs, the athletes, want to make sure that they have, um, those necessary meals that will, um, keep them playing at their optimal level. Um, they complained a little bit about this and that, but then yet they, we'll see them on two-eleven going to, uh, you know, Wendy's or eating stuff that, you know, and we got the good stuff right here to help them. So, um, with that being said, that, that was, um, uh, we meet quarterly. So January fifteenth is our next meeting, March fourteenth, and then May fourteenth. Um, another committee, um, that I was on, that, um, our chair is the, um, Policy Committee. And we had our second meeting and, um, we, um, ironed out some differences, but at the same time, we had everybody in attendance. And, um, again, you know, I just want to say that I really like the team that I'm working with. You know, everybody come in with a lot of energy and questions, concerns, and hit the ground running with how, you know, they want to learn as much as they can about what's going on. Again, I like to thank, um, Ms. Monchuria. She's, um, been, she, um, sits in on our meetings as well and very helpful with that. Um, right now, we're reviewing, uh, Title IX Sex Discrimination Policy. Um, we have the, a required action that we have to move on on that. We're waiting to hear back from the lawyers to give us, um, some information to determine, um, if, how we need to adjust and revise those, um, measures. Uh, what else? Um, uh, kudos to Denise. She did a wonderful job of, um, simplifying a lot of the, um, other, uh, policies that are coming down the pike. So, um, when we have homework, we're gonna look over that and we'll come back and, um, be able to, um, work on that as well. And, um, um, heads up on required board meeting trainings, child abuse in educational settings, data privacy and security awareness, sexual harassment prevention. These are things that us school board members need to be, um, go to training on. And so let me see, that's one, that's two. And that's all, I'm done. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Redd, Ms. Romero.
On behalf of the Diamonds and Pearls Committee, we're happy our events are back. For young ladies in grade six through twelve, uh, you can join our Women Empowerment Initiative full of fun, including dancing, singing, crafting, networking and education. Um, our first event is gonna be November eighteenth. Thank you.
Thank you. Um, we met, uh, the Diversity Committee met yesterday evening. Um, I'm glad to get back together, uh, with a community as diverse as Middletown is. This committee is so important. We just discussed as far as, uh, um, the platform that we're setting for the intentional movement that we're gonna use, uh, this year, very intentional. Thank you to, uh, Ms. Gillian Crawford, uh, for being a part of that committee and, um, looking forward to the great things we're about to do. All right, so on to the next thing, Board Members Roundtable. Ms. Romero?
For Roundtable, I want to thank, um, Ms. Adama and thank all of the amazing leaders who spoke tonight for what you purposely do every day with identifying, planning, designing and executing educational opportunities for our scholars.
Thank you, Mr. Williams, Pastor Williams, excuse me.
Uh, I, I just want to, I want to say this for our community as a whole and as a large, uh, and all the things that we've experienced. We've experienced some tragedies in the last, um, month. Um, and, and I know that it's impacted a lot of people. Uh, the things that have been going on nationally, internationally has impacted a lot of people. Uh, I want to, I want to say this is that, um, life keeps life-ing. And, and, uh, one of the most important things is, is that we continue to have concern for one another. We continue to show love. Um, being unified, um, doesn't mean being uniformed. And, um, and I think that that's the greatest thing, greatest thing that we have is, is our, is the experiences that we have that are different. Um, but we bring that together to be unified. Every piece of the puzzle doesn't, doesn't all have the same shapes. Um, but there's a way that they all fit together. And so, um, I just want to encourage all of us in our community that we continue to show concern, compassion, um, and not just, um, tolerance, um, but acceptance. And when I say acceptance, accept, acceptance doesn't mean agreement. Acceptance means that I accept you as you are. Um, I might not agree, but I accept you as you are and you as a, and, and recognize, uh, your experience and recognize your individuality. And, um, and that's one of the ways that we can move together. So I just needed to share that. Um, I won't preach because I have a whole lot more to say to my, um, to my church congregation, um, around, around these different things and, um, but you, I think you all get the gist. You all get the gist. Life keeps life-ing and at the end of the day, God is still God and we gonna keep moving. So that's all. Thank you.
Thank you, Pastor. Mr. Moore?
I'll be pretty brief. I just want to say, uh, I want to commend the entire, um, school staff for their ability to be able to still push through, through all these challenging times that we are, we're facing and it's, it's tough. You know, even as a board member and even as a parent, um, you know, I speak to my, some of my neighbors and those that are, um, especially in the high school. And it's, it's, it's kind of tough, you know? Um, because they all questioning or whether and like, what is really going on? You know, um, a lot of this stuff is, is unfortunate. Um, it's the things that we not, that we can foresee. We, you know, no, no parent wants to, you know, bury their, their child. So it's just, it's really tough, especially over the last thirty days or so that we have been dealing with this. So I just want to commend the staff to continue to, you know, keep pushing through and encouraging our young students to, uh, you know, understand that, you know, life has a way of, you know, showing you how to come together and they definitely doing a pretty good job at that, you know? Um, other than that, um, just wanted to, uh, you know, just look forward to, you know, this, this weekend that I have coming up. I have a couple of our, um, young ladies that are here from, um, that's in the middle school, uh, at Twin Towers in Monthagen. We actually going down to, uh, P A to Spooky Nook to play, um, against a, you know, some pretty good competition. Um, so I'm looking forward to that, uh, you know, and definitely, uh, giving them huge kudos from last week, uh, playing with Old School out in, um, D C, uh, finishing three and one at the regionals out there as well. So it was definitely a fun time. And once again, I have to say, you know, although, you know, a lot of things are happening, unfortunately, there are a lot of good things that's happening here within the district. And I'm hoping that we can continue to build from that collectively and moving forward. Thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Moore. Mr. Perino?
Mitch? Yeah, well, uh, Monday, of course, it's, we're off, is Veterans Day. And if we, uh, if we didn't have veterans, I don't think any of us would be here today doing what we're doing now. Uh, to start off, to start it off, uh, tomorrow, well, today actually, our NJT, uh, our NJROTC unit, uh, decorated the, uh, uh, graves of the vets in the Orange County Cemetery, the Veteran Cemetery. Tomorrow, our NJROTC unit is going down to Carter at eight o'clock. And I'm sure Kevin will be there or Caroline will be there. And, uh, what they're doing, the kids come in in camo, a lot of them, and the NJOTC students, uh, uh, the NJOTC cadets greet them. Um, and I want to thank Camille Adama, who's a, a Navy veteran, a, a on-the-table officer. And, uh, so on Monday, our, uh, NJOTC unit will be presenting the colors at the Elks Club. There's a, a combined, uh, uh, event with, uh, two of our veterans, uh, uh, troops, uh, are going to be present. So I just wanted to, uh, I just want to say that. Uh, the other two items, very quickly, I have a little time left. Uh, I did wear this tie for a certain reason. You know, there's all kinds of help. It says, "Save the children." And I didn't wear a suit jacket tonight, as I said. There's all kinds of help available for, uh, our students in our district. If a student is having trouble, if you're having trouble, speak to, and you can't, you don't want to speak to, uh, your teacher. There's guidance counselors to speak to. They'll point you in the right direction. There's social workers. We have psychologists to speak to. Everybody has problems. I think everybody around the board, around this board has had problems at one time or another. But you can deal with it. We can help you deal with a problem. I don't think there's any problem that you might have that we can't help you with. We want to point you in the right direction. We'll point you in the right direction. We'll get you help. There's, there's, there's nothing that is hopeless, believe me. We want to help you. We want to save you. We want to help you graduate. You're all members of our family. Believe me. So I have a couple of other things. That's, I'll, I'll bring them up at the next meeting. I'm almost done.
Thank you, Mr. Peri, thank you, Mr. Perino. Mr. Redd?
Yes, again, good evening. I just want to take the time to, um, say that there's so many positive things going on. I don't see how people can find too much negative to even begin to- I don't see how people can find too much negative to even begin to start with. I just want to first start with Assistant Superintendent Camille Adama, and taking the time to give that presentation on the testing throughout the grades, and being able to field questions, and, and with your team, just hearing how we feel and, and what our concerns are, and just being able to address them, because it's a beautiful thing when we can just sit down and just kind of converse and just see where people are, and just, again, just try to be making good decisions, that's first and foremost, and will always be about the children first. Again, I want to move to, due to a couple of the losses that we had, I just applaud, again, Superintendent Amy Creedon and your team, how you guys just stepped in and, and just took the time to really put the pieces in place where we can support families and just have those interventions on hand before school, after school. I mean, I mean, that was just very powerful, because, you know, we, we don't know how these things are, we, we, we don't, we hope that we'll never have to experience them, but it's just terrible to just think and to wonder what those parents are going through. And so again, the interventions, the support systems, and the timing was just fantastic. What else? I think that's, I think that's all. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Redd. Mr. Freddie Williams?
Yes, thank you. To kind of co-tail off what Pastor Andrew and Kurt had mentioned, the way that the district stepped up in this, you know, these trying times has been amazing, from all the different programs they're providing, and, and the, the professional counseling that's been provided. It's unfortunate that we have to get these reminders of how important life and family and friends and, you know, our children are through tragedy, and that's what happens, you know? We, we, we're going through life in the Riggeman Row, and we're busy, and we're, you know, we're here and we're there, and then, you know, tragedy strikes, and then we have to sit and kind of like revisit things, revisit what's important, what's, what to prioritize. So, you know, my heart goes out to these families and everyone affected. Like Kurt said, or Andrew said, you know, it's undeniable that we're going to go through things, but it's, it's, it's the bounce back. You know, that's, that's what's important, how we deal with the situations and how we, how we surround each other and then support each other. So I definitely want to give kudos to the district and the staff, and the kids that are in these situations, the friends of the victims, you know? Of course, the parents and, and family, but, you know, I had posted something on social media that you got to hug everybody tight, you know? You, you, you never know what's around the corner, you know? So we definitely need to do that reset and, 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 you know, prioritize things. We get busy, we're all, I mean, everybody at this table, I know we have busy lives, but it's unfortunate we have to get that reminder through tragedy, you know? So I think that's so important, but I definitely want to give kudos to the district and everybody at these, at these tables, because I know you guys really pour in and engage, and you guys really care, so that's what I have. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Williams. Just to piggyback on what you said, I want to thank this board just for the level of engagement intentionally, the communication, just what's going on with the committees. Everybody's just diving in and getting the trainings to try to be the best board members that we can be for our families and for our kids, and also definitely I want to just thank Ms. Monchuria for being the glue to allow us to do everything we do. You are the pulse. With that being said, motion to adjourn.
Real quick, real quick, real quick, don't forget, fall, fall plays are going on tomorrow night here at the high school, tomorrow night and Saturday. What, what, what's the, what is the?
Clue.
Clue, clue, that's right, it's clue. So I just, I just wanted to make sure I put that out there for the community. Come and support, come and support our, our kids on tomorrow. It would, it would go a long way just to grab a ticket and, and come into one of the performances.
Mr. Freddie Williams?
Pastor reminded me, I forgot something, too. We have our Middletown Midi Bears playing in the Section Nine Championship next Saturday? Next Friday at Deets Field, right, in Kingston? So that's, that team has dealt with a lot of adversity. Yeah, that team has dealt with a lot of adversity, and they keep pushing, and now they're ending up in the championship, so let's, if we can get out there, let's support our Midi Bears next Friday.
That's right, let's keep that Midi pride. Motion to adjourn. Did I get it so moved? Did I get it second? All right, the next meeting will be Thursday, November 21st, 2024. It's a short meeting and a workshop. December 12th is our next regular meeting. Everyone have a great night. Thank you so much.
Nice job, Mitch.
Nice job, Mitch.